Rob, you guys, y'all ready? It is six thirty. I've got six thirty and five seconds. What do you have?
About six twenty.
Okay, all right, all right. Troy, may I go? May I go? All right, good evening, everyone. It is six thirty on May fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. This is the time and place for the regular meeting of the Northern Lebanon School Board of Directors. I do call this meeting to order. Director Murray. Great, thank you. It's great to see everybody here this evening. We do have a full agenda, but we'll be able to get most of you out of here pretty quickly. Madam Secretary, may please have a roll call.
Fraser.
Present.
Moyer.
Here.
Fowler.
Present.
Williams.
Here.
Blau.
Present.
Murray.
Present.
Fine.
Present.
England.
Here.
Nom.
Present.
All members present.
Great, thank you. First item for this evening is adoption of the agenda. Everyone has had an opportunity to review the agenda. It was published publicly on Friday afternoon. Is there a motion to adopt this evening's agenda?
Motion to adopt the agenda as presented.
Thank you, Director Murray, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Director Williams, is there any discussion? Okay, hearing none, all in favor of adopting this evening's agenda, please indicate with an aye or a yes.
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, hearing none, my vote is also yes, that motion carries unanimously. Okay, we will move now to presentations. This is the 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 main event for this evening. First like to announce that the high school students of the month for May are Gavin Kubicka and Lena Horner. This award is sponsored jointly by the Fredericksburg and Jonestown Lions Clubs. The middle school student of the month for May is Emily Marinkov. I hope I got that right. This award is sponsored by the Northern Lebanon County Rotary Club, and she will be recognized at a future meeting of the Rotary Club. We will move now to student board representative, Carter. All right.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Great. Is your, is the mic on? Did you press the button? Is it green light? Okay.
Yeah. So coming up on June sixth is our annual, our first field day back from pre-COVID. This, and then for next year, our two thousand and twenty-five officers, our president is Nathan Swank, our vice president is Ethan Hughes, our secretaries are Cadence Diaz and Elena Laufer, our treasurer is Olivia Hensel, and then here tonight is our next year's board rep, Max Rank.
Great, thank you, welcome.
Thank you.
Excellent report as always, thank you, Carter. Gary.
Okay, usually there's one or two people in the audience, but there's quite a few tonight. We wanted to be able to take a few minutes to recognize our students of the month throughout the year. I will just say this. These students, not, they weren't just recognized for that month. This is an award. These kids are actively involved in in musicals, in sports, in student council, and, you know, clubs, and and you see them engaged and involved with Northern Lebanon. And yes, for a month they were recognized, but it's a culmination of things throughout their careers here at Northern Lebanon. A lot of them I know, some of them I don't, but I know that the staff is very, very proud of them, and and that's evidenced by their nomination and ultimately success in winning these awards. So tonight, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Ebert. We have also representatives from the Lions Club that are going to help hand out certificates. Director Nam, President Nam, is going to also shake a few hands tonight. We're going to get them in front, Director Nam, so you're going to have to move. And at the end, you can stand in front of us. We promise that we won't poke into back or anything, but if if we could do like a you, maybe two little, two rows, Mrs. Bruce is then going to get a picture of everyone, and then we have a thousand dollars for all the kids. Oh, no, we don't. All right, Dr. Ebert, I'm turning it over to you.
Good evening. This is one of the true pledges I have as a secondary principal to recognize the high school students of the month throughout the entire school year. Each and every single one of them has demonstrated dedication, not only to their schoolwork, but also to their athletics and also many community events. They are just not just those that are doing well in school, they do well across the board. I also want to acknowledge all the sport that their their teachers, their coaches, and also the parents and guardians have put into supporting them, getting them to, from point A to point B when they needed to, to encourage them to keep on moving forward when they had any kind of trials and tribulations, and then through that, they overcame those. So I'm going to be calling you up one by one by the month. You'll get a plaque, you get the handshake, an individual picture for Mrs. Bruce, and then, as Dr. Messinger stated, stay up here, because then they want to get a root picture at the end here. And then here from the Fredericksburg Lions Club and the Jonestown Lions Club are Larry Kreiser and Bob Hilligas, so they'll be helping with this process. So for the month of September, we have Brooke Beamisifer. Also for the September, we had Grace Forenjiak, she could not be here this evening. Next for October, we have Hudson Brown. And Carter Chesslock. Then for the month of November, we have Campbell Bomberger. Unfortunately, he couldn't be here this evening as well. As I said, we have very dedicated students. And next we have Thomas Zito. For the month of December, we have Scarlett Nam. And another individual who's obviously busy tonight is Luke Schaefer. For the month of January, we have Tyler Shunk. And Island Zamba. For the month of February, we have Tanner Fagley. And Ava Zekman. For the month of March, we have Bailey McFeeters. And Ariel Mac, excuse me, McIntosh.
Sorry about that.
For the month of April, we have Reese Bailey. And I guess we're moving on, she couldn't make it tonight. For April, we also have Alaya Lasanta. That's that support from parents there for you. For the month of May, we have Lena Horner. And last but not least, we have Gavin Quebeca. Now the big challenge of getting everyone in the same picture.
All right. Yeah, may I make a suggestion that Gavin's in the background?
And you're more than willing to join for the rest of the meeting, but you're also more than willing to exit out the door.
Yeah, we'll take a minute, give you guys a second. You're welcome to leave. Gonna be a long one. Well, that cleared a room.
Okay, great. Really one of the best moments that we get to do as a board every year. Very nice. Okay, next item for the agenda is the superintendent's report, Dr. Messinger.
A couple of things. One, I wanted to clarify, I tried to get this in at the very end of the meeting last week, and I, everybody was eager to adjourn. I incorrectly told book sources is out of effort. I was thinking of Jubilee, which is out of, well, they may have stores otherwise, but I've dealt with Jubilee out of Lebanon, but book sources is out of effort. I stand corrected on that, wanted to make sure I corrected that publicly. Book savers, oh my goodness. Book savers. Oh, yeah, yeah. Also wanted to mention, right now, our meeting for June will be on June fourth. June eleventh is as needed. We'll play that by ear as we get closer. That may be contingent upon construction, if there's anything there that we need to go over, but we will try to be prepared. And then the the fourth meeting and the fifth is graduation, I believe everybody has their invites for that, so it'll be back to back events for us. Wanted to talk briefly, we were talking last week about the meeting on bullying last Thursday. My, I, first of all, an hour is not enough time, but my takeaway from it was really, really impressed by our kids. We had a couple of ninth graders there and a junior, who really, I thought, did a really nice job of talking about not only their situations, where they see things, talking about the school itself, but just represented themselves well, talking about their opinions of things. Director Williams was there, Director Moore was there, Director Fowler was there, had some good discussions about, you know, what what bullying looks like and mental health, I mean, the whole thing, because we get, we, you know, they pretty much immediately got into the social media component of things very quickly. So good discussion, we're gonna, we're gonna try to get one more and sneak one more in before the end of this year and talk a little bit about some research, some homework that I gave them in terms of looking for programs that maybe have been tried either by communities or school districts that have had some success, whether it's an educational program or some something of that sort. So we'll talk once once more and then maybe talk about some next steps for that as well. In the meantime, we've talked briefly here, but there will be a club next year of students that are directly wanting to delve into and tackle this and also some things we're doing that we talked about with the grant that's on for tonight as well. And then finally, to wrap up my comments tonight, Mrs. Bruce has a short presentation for us.
Hi, good evening, everybody. So one thing that you guys have heard me over the last couple of years talk about with hiring is just how do we present ourselves as a district to new prospective employees? So one thing that I've seen and a question I've heard from tons and tons of applicants as we've done interviews is at the end, when I say, do you have any questions for us? A lot of the time, they will say, what's the culture and climate of your district? Like, what's a typical day look like? What's the vibe? How are people relating to each other? So parking lot that question for a second. Earlier this year, we sent out a district survey to all staff, and at the end, one of the questions in that survey to the staff was what makes you proud to be a Viking? So we kind of had a little bit of a light bulb moment of, oh, we could take that information and create something, not only could we use it for prospective employees, but really for anybody, but it's our promotional video, and you can find it on the employment tab of our website, but I wanted to highlight it for you so that you could see, because I think it's pretty powerful to see what the staff has said. Now, I will tell you before we play it, I didn't, because it was getting too long, we had to cut some things. Every quote on here is a direct quote from a staff member. We had tons of other quotes, some of them got cut only because they were so, so similar that it didn't make sense to put them in, but I think it really gives you a good flavor of the district, and it's something that we're really happy to show prospective employees, and I just did some interviews this week, and that question came up again, I said, well, actually, visit the website, because we have a new promotional video up there, and I think that gives you a little window into our world, so I hope you like it.
Thank you for putting that together. I know that you were, the day those were trickling in, you were pretty happy. And I appreciate our staff taking the time to to do that, because it wasn't obviously required, and and for them to take a few minutes and put things down, and I know there were a lot of others that didn't get on there, but thank you for putting that together for us.
Yeah, thank you. Very good.
Okay, that's the end of my report for tonight.
Okay, is there any old business to bring to the board this evening? Okay, hearing none, we will move to public comment portion per Board Policy nine oh three, which is published on our website. All individuals wishing to participate in open board meeting were asked to register their intent with the board secretary by three P M. as of today, unless specifically advertised differently. Mrs. Martin, did we have any one sign up for public comment? Okay, so we have no public comment this evening. That takes us to our items for board action this evening. Should be noted that public notice was given for this meeting in accordance with Act eighty-four of nineteen eighty-six. By notice of the president, the following action requires a voice vote. All votes in favor shall be stated with an aye or a yes. All votes opposed shall be stated with a nay or no. All members abstaining shall state, I abstain when prompted. The votes will be recorded in the minutes as unanimous roll call vote, unless there are any votes in opposition or abstention. If necessary, the president may subsequently call for a roll call vote to be recorded in the minutes. So the first item for action this evening is our consent agenda that we established at the committee meeting last week. Any comments, Dr. Messinger?
No, I said you accept that as presented.
Okay, so our consent agenda for this evening goes from items eight point one through eight point nine. Is there a motion to approve items eight point one through eight point nine? Thank you, Director England, is there a second? Thank you, Director Murray, is there any discussion? Okay, hearing no discussion, all those in favor of approving items eight point one through eight point nine, please indicate with an aye or a yes.
Yes.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, hearing none, my vote is also a yes, so the motion carries unanimously. Consent agenda is adopted, which brings us then to the items for discussion. We do have quite a few for this evening. The first one, obviously, is the important one, and that is the budget for the next school year. Dr. Messinger.
The three percentages that were discussed are listed for you, A, B, and C. You'll notice in all three, the second paragraph references zero dollars for the capita tax. After speaking with Dave Jones, his stock and leader, there are some steps to go through to eliminate it completely, but he recommends, whether, he actually recommends not to do that, he recommends to leave it at zero for as long as as the board would like it at zero. And then if if there is ever a need for it, then that can be added in without taking those, taking the additional steps to to do that. However, either way, we could not, that that could not occur by tonight. So if we want it to be zero for next year, the way to do that is to list it as zero under here. I think there are other local, still, well, there are, there are other local school districts that have gotten rid of it. The word nuisance tax was used last week, and it is. So at that that rate of zero, there would not be bills going out, and there would not be any per capita tax, and that's the same for all three. If if you choose to do something different or go back to the five dollars, we would have to reverse that in the language tonight.
Any questions for Dr. Messinger about item nine point one? Budget? Okay. As I indicated last week at the committee meeting, we do have three options for the budget. I'm going to start with item nine point one A, which is the the budget based on a six point five percent annual increase in taxes. in taxes. Thinking there is that if item 9.1A passes, then we would not move to items B and C, because it would be moot at that point, and since that is the highest proposed tax increase, we are going to start there. So, I will receive at this point a motion to adopt 9.1A, a budget based upon a 6.5% annual tax revenue increase.
Motion to approve 9.1A.
Okay, thank you, Director Williams, is there a second? Thank you, Director England, is there any discussion?
Someone has said that leaders who cooperate with reality tend to do far better than those who compete with it. The reality of Northern Lebanon is this. Number one, we have consistently been in the bottom 10% to 20% of the 500 school districts in the state of Pennsylvania in terms of tax burden to the community members. Number two, prior to the current administration, very few proactive steps were taken to improve the physical structure of the buildings in the district. Number three, students have put up with outdated facilities for many years. The high school was built in 1957, completed in 1958, and many returning students have said that nothing has changed since they walked these halls 50-plus years ago. Number four, as a board, we approve the budget, but in all honesty, there is very minimal discretionary spending in the budget. The two areas that we have the most control over are the collective bargaining agreement, which is the agreed-upon salaries and benefits for teachers that we negotiate with the union, and number two, the taxing authority for the district. Outside of these two areas, the state of Pennsylvania dictates a significant portion of our budget. Number five, no one enjoys paying taxes, including those around this table, who will be impacted by the decision we make tonight. However, since taxes are the only mechanism that the board really has to fund this enterprise, I think it is important to remember that we, as a community, are investing in the future of this district by supporting an appropriate, reasonable increase to the taxes this year. Number six, our Director of Business Affairs has done a fantastic job of providing a 10-year plan that would permit us, if we raise taxes to the index of 6.5% this year, to then be able to decrease the tax hikes in the future years substantially, and then keep those raises under 3% for the last three years of the 10-year budget, and be able to pay our teachers, as well as all of our construction loans. On the other hand, if we don't raise taxes sufficiently, we will be underfunded within the next couple of years and then be required to raise taxes substantially in order to try to catch up. This plan has not worked well in the past and is certainly not recommended. And number seven, although it is true that more money does not always equal improved education for children, it is abundantly clear that cutting money from our budget will significantly reduce the ability for our district to educate our students effectively, which is really the reason why we exist. Therefore, I choose to cooperate with this reality by fully supporting the 6.5% tax increase that has been proposed. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Director England. Any other comments before I get the last word?
I think that we haven't, it's really hard to still make a 6.5% tax increase, I think, for our community after we saw something similar last year. You know, the, especially when the district is sitting on a surplus. I understand that there are payments that have to be made in the next few years, but, you know, that for our community and for what they're doing, it's put the board really in a hard place. We had previous boards that committed to a lot of spending on improvements for the district, but here we are, we're still going to, even if we chose not to raise taxes this year, the district is still sitting at a surplus. And so, I think, you know, a 6.5% tax increase is still a very large tax increase, when the district still would have funds left over and be sitting at a surplus.
Yeah, thank you. Any other comments?
I was curious why, it seems like this year and last year, and I don't know about the year before that, why we're always going to the highest level that we can possibly tax. Two years ago, it was at like 4%, and there was less of a surplus, and we were still fine. I feel like we're not looking about where we can cut or use some of that surplus. I know you had mentioned that it's only, it's only $200 a person per year. You're also looking at homeowners there, you're not looking at renters, and landlords in Pennsylvania can raise rent as much as they want, so once their property taxes go up, they can raise rent. And I know it might not be the majority of Northern Lebanon, but there's still a number of renters here in Northern Lebanon that would see more than a $200 per person. I'm all for, you know, going forward and doing things better, but I haven't seen tests increase in the past couple of years. I haven't seen, you know, more than 40% kids going off to college. I'm trying to see where we put, like, the 6% last year and the 4% the year before that, like, where, like, if you could show me next year, this is what we've done in three, four years by raising all these taxes, and this is the number we're getting, but I'm not, I'm not seeing that in our, in our keystones and our PSSAs. I also feel like we, we needed new things and we needed to improve, but to take in three years to do athletic improvement, high school improvement, elementary improvement, that's a lot to do in like three, four years, and then to force all these taxes out on the people. I think it would have been smarter to spread it out more, and I feel like that's, that's a big jump.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments?
Sure, yeah, thank you. I also think 6.5% is a little too high. If we can meet in the middle, that'd be great for the taxpayers and the people that are suffering. I got a chance, look at the 10-year forecast, and the administration's projecting to have a 35.5% over the next 10 years of increases, not including the past four years, a 17.1. When Mrs. Director Brown talked about test scores this past year on the PSSA, I think it's PSSA, am I right on that one? Yes, PSSSA, the middle school grades, grade six, I mean, I'm sorry, grade seven and eight all had proficiency less than 43.7, 38.2 in the English. The math, sixth grade six had 43.5, seventh grade had 29.3, eighth grade had 23.5, and even the special education students, the IEP students, really, really struggled on this. The English for the sixth grade was a 12.1, seventh grade was a 3.6, eighth grade was a zero. In the math testing proficiency above proficiency or higher, the math, sixth grade was 9.1, the seventh grade was 7.1, eighth grade was zero, and then the science part, there's only, eighth grade only did the science part, and that was a 4.3. So, in their budget for special education, we have a 7.6. I feel that with these numbers and the tax increases over the past four years, we are really not returning the investment for the kids, and it needs to, and we need to figure out why. I don't think tax increases are that, at least this high, is necessary. I think we have to tackle as to why some of these kids are still struggling, and maybe we have to revamp the program, but I feel that 6.5 is still too high for this tax year. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
I mean, I don't know, that's a multiple-hour discussion. I don't pretend for one second to think that the tax increase and test scores go hand-in-hand. We're tackling that through different avenues. I believe we have a good strategy moving forward. Test scores did go up last year. I mean, I've only been here, when I, my first year here was COVID, we didn't test at all. My second year here, we tested, but it didn't count. I don't even think it counted my third year here, to be honest with you, but compared to that, we've built every year since COVID has happened, but I don't think there's a correlation between the two. I'll just say that. I mean, I think, I will gladly talk about instruction, as a matter of fact, it's my favorite topic. I hate talking about the budget. I, you know, I'd rather, you know, go, go talk about instruction, that's my thing. But I don't, I don't think there's a correlation between the two, unless we're going to spend so much money that we're, you know, we're investing way, way, way more in professional development and additional support teachers and things like that. If we're gonna do that, then that would, but that, that would, would fiscally, that would take even more money, and I do believe that, to be honest with you, I think we can, we can accomplish test score increases across the board without, without doing that. I think we have some good things in place. We've been training both administrators and staff now, pretty much throughout the course of this year, and it is one of the two focal points, mental health and instructional strategies for next year. So, I think, I just, I just, I don't see a correlation between those two things. I agree with you, I guess is what I'm saying, that I don't think extra money does that. I think when we talk about, when we talk about the budget and look at the numbers, it's not, it's not about the, it's not correlated to the instruction, it's correlated to the, I mean, frankly, to be honest, it's, it's improvements, you know, it's $6.7 million in bond. That's really what it boils down to, or we wouldn't be having this discussion tonight, probably.
Okay, thank you. Okay, any other discussion?
Yeah, just a few thoughts. So, I mean, we continue to see that we have had years where we've had zero, and we've had years where we have had two, we've had years where we've had six, but the reality is, is that, you know, we're always, whenever we're in those situations where we're raising taxes, it's because we're trying to play catch-up. And I don't want to keep putting us in a position where we have to. I'd like for us to be in a position where we can balance and we can have a steady, a steady flow of increases. So, I kind of feel like we have to kind of get ahead of it, so that we can stay on top of it, rather than being in situations where we're making dire situations, dire decisions, and we're making, you know, dire decisions, and, you know, we are talking about having to cut things at some point. I mean, there's been definitely board discussions where we've had to talk about, you know, if we don't do this, then we're gonna have to cut. So, I just want us to kind of be ahead of the game a little bit, so that we can balance things, and, and so, you know, for that reason, I'll be supporting the 6.5.
Thank you. Director Murray, any final comments? Director Klein, Director Fowler? Nope? Did you want to?
Yeah, I look at, I look at it this way. I think Mike Marlowe, right before he left, talked a lot about investing in our school, and I think that's where we're at right now. The last couple of years, we invested heavily. We played catch-up, and it's not a single-year snapshot. You know, we took out those, those bonds, and we have to repay them, and I think we need a healthy fund balance in the future, so we don't have, so we do have some steadiness in the future, where we don't have to go drastic increases. And let's face it, coming out of COVID, inflation hasn't been great. Services everywhere is more than the typical 3%. People are getting paid more than 3% a year. I look at this as an investment into the future. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Please bear with me, I did prepare a fairly lengthy comment, because I do think that this is a heavy, it's a weighty issue. That's one that I have thought about consistently for the last three or four years, since, you know, this conversation has started, and I did just want to share my thoughts. It is fairly lengthy, so I apologize, but, "Our republic was originally founded on principles of protections of personal rights, including the rights of life, liberty, and property. Under any property tax system, I believe fundamentally that the last of these rights is inherently at risk, as under a property tax regime, I can never actually own my home or my land. The government will always have a lien on that property. That is why property taxes are so frustrating and discouraging to so many of us, particularly in this community. I absolutely understand that and share the distaste for the system, but unfortunately, it is the system that we have, and as of today, it is the only real system available to fund our school district. The capital, structural, and educational growth of our district unfortunately depend and depend almost entirely on our ability to gather revenue through property taxes. More than 50% of our revenue comes from the local community through property taxes, and there is little that we can do as a school board to change that, apart from simply choosing to not adequately and appropriately fund our schools. The General Assembly in Harrisburg has been ordered by the Pennsylvania Supreme Court to fix the current school funding methodology that unfairly favors wealthy suburban school districts at the educational and financial detriment of urban schools and rural schools like NL. As of today, nothing meaningful has been achieved to that end. I do not mean to be ungracious to our representatives in Harrisburg, but I simply do not anticipate that they will act anytime soon to alleviate the problem that we have related to taxation and school funding. I certainly am not optimistic that such action, when it emerges through the cloud of party politics, will address the property tax conundrum. So, that means that it falls entirely on us at the local level to fund our district while we wait and rely, perhaps naively, on better politics in Harrisburg. For decades, predecessor boards, who I absolutely trust were acting in a manner that they believed was right, chose a stance on tax rate increases that, when imposed, were artificially and corrosively low. Those low taxes, while very nice in the short term, came with a long-term and very real cost. That cost had to be paid at some point. Five years ago, when I was first elected to this board, our district was facing a number of major financial issues and challenges. We had a struggling and declining fund balance, meaning that the district was operating its already underfunded programs at a deficit, which in turn meant that we had limited ability and no real functional ability to rely on internal capital in the case of an emergency or otherwise needed capital investment. Unfortunately, we also had significantly declining facilities, including five school buildings in immediate need of massive capital investment for renovations or total replacement. And on top of that, our educational performance, as was noted, was lagging heavily, with test scores in some areas among the lowest in the Commonwealth. Educational inequity was a significant condition within our schools, particularly at the elementary level, where some children, based on my recollection, were receiving instruction at a 14-to-1 student ratio, student-teacher ratio, while others in the same grade were receiving instruction at a 30-to-1 ratio. The culture of our district was ailing, to say the very least, and bordering on toxic at many levels. In the five years since, and most of this goes to the credit of our superintendent and the administration, I'm very proud that we have made substantive and meaningful investments in every area. In terms of the areas that a school board can directly impact, we have a brand-new, consolidated elementary school, where we sit tonight and where during the day, our youngest students enjoy a state-of-the-art learning environment in unified and manageable class sizes, not separated by living communities or population densities. By building this beautiful school, we have actually saved the district significant expenses, estimated at $30 million minimum over the next 30 years, in both needed renovations and in the ongoing need to maintain a staff that previously supported four separate elementary schools. This has enabled us to avoid significant costs, not through elimination of positions, but through the natural attrition of retirements that do not require replacement. We have also been able to sell all four of our prior elementary school buildings, an accomplishment by administration that is significant in a state where myriad former school buildings still lie vacant and on the property books of their districts. We did all of this on a near-revenue-neutral basis, without requiring the increase in taxes for that particular purpose. Rather, the taxes that we have increased over the last five years, and I acknowledge that these increases have been substantial, have been done so that we can optimally fund the district and take the next critical step in fully renovating our secondary school to bring it up-to-date and up-to-speed with our current society and our oldest students expanding educational needs. And this does not even address the other improvements that we have made to our athletic facilities that are even now serving to expand and build on our district's spirit and sense of community. In many ways, the hard work of financial capital investment is already done, and now the harder work of human capital investment, particularly in the realms of educational achievement and cultural improvement, remains before us. But we have a dedicated administration that is working hard every day on reaching those peaks as well. In making the investments that we have made, we have set the Northern Lebanon School District for long-term, meaningful success in every area. The hard choices that we have made to return this district to a state of adequate funding, and yes, to do so in large part through the steady but necessary increase in taxes, has established a framework that will permit our schools, our teachers, and especially our students to thrive for many decades. Even so, and even with an index tax increase of 6.5% again this year, Northern Lebanon will in all probability continue to maintain the lowest tax rate of all school districts in our county. By securing a long-term fund balance in the range of 60- By securing a long-term fund balance in the range of $6 to $7 million per year going forward, we are permitting future school boards and future taxpayers the hopeful luxury of not having to make the same very difficult choices of the last five years. As the capital investment requirements dissipate, so will the proportional demands on our taxpayers. But we still have a bit to go. This year, we unanimously voted to approve the incurrence of bonds that will help to achieve the last remaining capital investment project scope, and we have one more to go. We must, we absolutely must, fund those bond liabilities that we unanimously agreed to incur. We hold a fiduciary responsibility to the district and to its taxpayers to do so. I vividly understand the economic pressures for every family and for every business in our community, that these are real and that those pressures present difficult everyday decisions of spending, earning, and saving. But we fundamentally cannot go back to how things were in the past. There is an undeniable appeal to holding taxes at current levels through a 0% increase. I wish we could do so, but we simply cannot. Unfortunately, and until the General Assembly in Harrisburg does the real work of fixing our Commonwealth's public education funding approach, annual increases in property taxes are not going away. A 0% tax increase is simply a pipe dream. Since we cannot rest our hopes on the shoulders of lawmakers in Harrisburg, our best hope and best chance to alleviate the ongoing burden on our district's taxpayers is to continue to fund the district in a manner that permits, hopefully very soon and hopefully next year, based on the numbers we have seen, annual increases of a much lower degree. To choose today to not raise taxes at a level that continues to support our liabilities and our fund balance is a choice to affirmatively select deficit spending, drawing from our newly vested fund balance to pay for our going costs. Eventually, once that fund balance is entirely depleted, and it would not take long for that to happen, the school board, either the nine of us or another group, will have to make the difficult decision again to massively increase taxes over a period of years until the district is again viable at an unknown interim cost to our students. Robbing from savings to pay for ongoing costs is no way to run a school district. I do not run my home that way. I do not run my business that way, and I will not and cannot run the school district that way. Similarly, I know that the idea of cutting expenses has a very real appeal. Certainly to the degree the expense side of our ledger is artificially and unnecessarily bloated, we should do what we can to cut those expenses. Again, I wish that we could do so, but the reality is twofold. First, I believe our budget absolutely reflects an overall lean operation. This district had, of necessity, run on a shoestring for decades, and though better now, there simply is not an identifiable excess that I have seen that would accommodate any reduction in expenses that would even touch, let alone meaningfully impact the needed increase in tax revenues. That is the second reality. Those expense reductions simply do not exist, apart from the potential terminations of educational staff that would come at the cost of severely and detrimentally affecting our children's education. To do that would be to elect the medieval medicine practice of causing a potentially fatal wound in order to bleed the patient into health, and I refuse to do that. As school board directors, we certainly do represent the interests of our taxpayers. We are nine of those taxpayers, and the interest of taxpayers undeniably motivated many to go to the polls and to place us in these seats of trust. But we do not represent the taxpayers' interest in a vacuum, nor is property tax the only issue that brought us here. We also represent the interests of the administration to effectively run a viable school district, the interests of our professional staff to provide the best possible education to our students, and most of all, the interests of the families and children that entrust this board to provide a safe, enriching environment conducive to academic achievement. Sometimes those interests overlap, sometimes those interests conflict, but balancing those interests is the job that we signed up for when we put our names on those ballots. I understand that right now, it seems as if that balance is skewed heavily against the taxpayer. But again, for decades, that went the other way at the very real expense of our students. I am deeply aware of and concerned over the impact that these steady high increases have on our residents, particularly those on fixed incomes whose ability to both live and maintain their property rights are viscerally at odds. I believe that we need to take, as a board, a serious look at ways that we might be able to provide some relief to those folks. I believe there are mechanisms under the law for us to pursue in that regard. To that end, I really appreciate and fully support Director Williams's proposal to eliminate or zero out the per capita tax as part of whatever budget we approve tonight. Moreover, I firmly believe that we have a fiduciary responsibility not just to today's taxpayers, administration, teachers, students, and families, but also to the administration, teachers, students, families, and taxpayers of years to come. At the polls last November, I heard from some older residents in our community their frustration that they will not be here in 30 years when the benefits that we are pursuing at their cost today will be fully realized. I understand that, and understand that I likely may not be here in 30 years to see those benefits either. But I also believe that leadership requires vision, and it is our responsibility, obligation, and duty to lead with a vision for the future. I do not want to pay 6.5% more in taxes, again, I really don't. But I do want to see this district and its students thrive, not just today, but in decades to come. I want to see Northern Lebanon become the premier public school district in our county. We have discussed this at this table before, but to the extent school choice is coming to Pennsylvania, I want Northern Lebanon to be the school of choice, which includes being the brick and mortar preferred option to families considering cyber school, which is a real expense that I would love to cut as soon as possible. To do all of that, we need to continue to strongly invest, and to do otherwise is to ensure that we will not be the school of choice either in the present or going forward. I do not want to pay 6.5% more in taxes again this year, but I believe that it is the right thing to do. For the reasons I've already stated, I do not believe that a 0% increase is feasible in any way, as it would require us to immediately begin operating at a deficit, returning to the failed management strategies of the past. And while we could also consider a 5.5% increase, which likely would fund our obligations and operating costs, the annual difference in ultimate taxpayer impacts between 6.5% and 5.5% is relatively minimal, a few dollars a year, while the future long-term impact of a 6.5% increase, as much as I don't want it in a vacuum, is substantially more than the alternative would provide, in the range of about $3 million of incremental benefit to our ending fund balance over 10 years, with the added advantage of lower increases coming sooner than otherwise. In other words, this move now would continue to permit our district to advance on our current trajectory of success, with the aim of proportionally reducing, but in reality not eliminating, these increases going forward. Given the known obligations and costs of today, the anticipated challenges of tomorrow, including addressing ongoing and future teacher shortages and competition for that talent, and the unknown and unanticipated expenses that are surely in the future, I think 6.5% today is the right solution, not only for today, but for the long-term health of the district. Thanks. And again, apologize for the length of that. Thought about this a lot. Okay. Okay, with that, Mrs. Martin, I'll take a roll call vote on item 9.1A.
Kreiser?
No.
Moyer?
No.
Fowler?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Wow?
No.
Murray?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes.
Englund?
Yes.
Naum?
Yes.
Six yes, three no, motion carried.
Okay. Thank you all, and thank you for the discussion. This means that items 9.1B and 9.1C are moot, and we will move to 9.2, the McGrath Response System.
In the interest of levity, will you be doing that for each item tonight?
Yes. I have, I have seven pages for every item.
That is the grant we talked about last week. I sent some information follow-up. I don't, I don't know if that answered the questions or not, but that's the grant that we'd like to pursue, that has mental health pulling, both a response system and then training for staff, students, administrators.
Okay, any questions for Dr. Messinger on 9.2?
Just a quick comment. I appreciate what Dr. Messinger shared with us, and so that addressed the questions I had and the opportunity to, for the board to participate in the training.
Great, thank you. Is there any other discussion, or questions, I mean? Okay, is there a motion to adopt 9.2?
Motion to adopt 9.2.
Thank you, Director Williams. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Director Murray. Any discussion? Okay, hearing none, we'll do a oral roll, just a unanimous roll call vote. All those in favor of approving 9.2, please indicate with an aye or a yes.
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, hearing none, my vote is also a yes, motion carries unanimously. We'll go to item 9.3, lunch prices for next year.
Okay, there, tried to explain that again, I think everyone read LeAnn's email, and just, just to summarize a few things, technically, that calculator calls for, gives kind of a range up to 70 to 80 cent increase, but the state kind of looks at it, or federal government, looks at it as a goodwill to move at least a little bit, so that was the recommendation for a dime. However, if, if it's voted no, it'll just stay the same. And really, the, the end result for us becomes costs that are needed to potentially replace equipment or supplies or things like that. I do want to clarify that, I know that LeAnn said that, I think she talked about there being, that it makes a profit, but it doesn't really make a profit, it makes a profit standalone, but that's be, only because we take money out of the general fund toward the lunches. But I think her explanation was clear, and I'm probably doing nothing but muddying it. So, she is in Florida on Zoom, so if there's questions, you can ask her. But we, we can, again, we're doing what was, we're doing what the calculator says to do, however, if it's a no vote, it's not the end of the world for us either. LeAnn, are you out there? Okay, maybe we lost her.
No, I'm here, I'm here. You, you did a good job, Gary, thank you.
Okay, well, she's here if there's any questions and if you can hear anything else.
Can you hear me? I'm sorry.
Oh, we can hear you.
Yeah.
Oh, gosh.
You're rattling in our teeth. It's not your fault.
Thank you.
Okay, any questions regarding 9.3, the school lunch prices?
Well, I guess, brother, I mean, do we need a motion before we can ask questions and discuss?
No, we'll ask questions first, and then we'll take a motion.
Well, I guess my question for LeAnn is, are there any, are there any creative ways of being able to adjust the school lunch prices that we can explore or maybe have an opportunity to explore?
Um, do you mean? So we can adjust à la carte prices if we needed to, we can adjust adult prices as well. I wouldn't suggest increasing those prices instead of increasing these student lunch prices.
I'm not suggesting that. I guess my main goal is, how can we either keep the school lunch price as is or lower it? Is there any way that we can do that?
There is, if you wanted to subsidize and pay for the students' lunches out of the general fund. But there's no, I mean, in the world of economics, there's always the statement, there is no free lunch, so at some point, we've got to charge for the lunches unless we want to pay for the students' lunches.
Right, right now, free and reduced, all get free meals. Reduced gets free as well right now, and free, free breakfasts. The, I guess the danger being that when you, when you participate in the free and reduced meal plan, what happens is, if you're not charging your quote-unquote "fair" share, and you get audited, then they can come in and they're going to say, well, you're not paying enough, and therefore, you're going to have to take more money out of your fund balance to pay for the part that we believe you should have. I shouldn't say we, but the, the full-price students aren't paying their share of it, and therefore, we would have to take money out of our. So yes, there's a, there's a way to do it, you could, we can pay for it out of the budget. Like you could, you could technically make all lunches free for everyone, but then that money has to come out of the budget to do it.
So are we talking hundreds of thousands, or are we just talking thousands?
I don't know the answer to that. LeAnn, do you know the answer to that?
Hundreds of, like, not hundreds of thousands, but it's definitely not just a few thousand dollars. It's, it's going to be a significant impact to your general fund budget.
Is there a way we can find out what that number is?
I, I think procedurally, what we would do is, at this point, we would vote no on the motion, and then we can, we can do some work in the coming months to develop it.
Table it?
I don't believe we can table it because it's part of the budget. Is that correct, LeAnn?
No, I think.
It's not part of the budget. You may table it, we can get you more information and come back to it later if you'd like.
Okay. Do you have more questions? Let me receive more questions, and then I'll entertain a motion to table, if that's what you'd like to do. Okay, any other questions? Okay. Director Williams, do you have a motion?
I, I'd like to motion to table this so that we can gather more information.
Okay, is there a second to that motion?
I'll second that.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Is there a discussion on the motion to table? Okay. Hearing none, Mrs. Martin, may I please have a roll call vote on the motion to table item 9.3? And, and your vote, and the affirmative is a vote to table this, as suggested by Director Williams, negative vote would be to continue with discussion and vote on, on the item itself.
Moyer?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Wow?
Yes.
Murray?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes.
Englund?
Yes.
Naum?
No.
But motion carries, all right. I, I. Oh, sorry, sorry, sorry.
Chen?
Yes.
Okay.
I'd recommend, I, I mean, I know you got, you have some vision for this, I'd recommend not, actually, tomorrow morning at 10 o'clock, LeAnn's in Florida, you could do a Zoom call. No, when she comes back, I recommend you just sit down with her and maybe ask some questions, and she can pull up numbers, or if you get them ahead of time, she can have them ready.
So does she, when does she return?
She's back Monday, but don't, maybe wait a day or two.
All right. Okay, with that, item 9.3 is tabled. Thank you for the discussion, for the questions. We'll move to item 9.4. This is the electricity agreement for the district.
Yes. So there are two proposals there, and frankly, Director, now, I'm going to let you take it away because you, you are the expert here, and I know you did some math, and we're going to look to you for a recommendation.
Thanks. I, I certainly don't hold myself to, to be an expert on the energy prices themselves, although this is a little bit of what I do. I have taken a look at both of the agreements. I did ask LeAnn at the committee meeting, and I apologize for springing that on her at the last minute, but if there was another option in addition to the proposed electricity supply agreement, and LeAnn did provide what's in your agenda, the participation document where, where in Northern Lebanon could participate with the IU-13 in its energy procurement program, and they operate that with a number of other schools. Based on what I was able to see, and this is very much back-of-the-envelope calculations for me, I do believe, okay, so first, let's start at the baseline. The current IU-13 electricity procurement program does come at a lower price than even our current energy procurement program, and that proposed energy procurement would go up. So I think in balance, based upon my review of this, I do believe that the IU-13 would likely save the school district some measure of money over the course of the year. I don't think it would be an astronomical amount. My guess, and none of this is set in stone because all of these are based on the market at PJM, but my best guess is somewhere in the range of perhaps about $9,000 of savings for next year, if we could go with IU-13. So my personal recommendation, to the degree that I can provide one, is that we, that we consider the participation agreement with the IU-13. And LeAnn, thank you for providing all this information. So with that, any other questions? I'll attempt to assist in answering them to the degree that I can.
Quick question, for the IU-13, is it a five-year, you're stuck at that rate, or is that a one-year?
Good crush, good question. So it's a long-term contract, as far as I can tell, and I think the minimum, and LeAnn, you can, you can chime in here, but I think it's a three-year. We'd be looking at a three-year minimum long-term program, which I also think is, is, is a beneficial thing to look at. But it's not a, it's not a super. think is, is, is a beneficial thing to look at. But it's not a, it's not a super long-term if you find out that it's not, you know, not providing the benefit that we want, we can go and shop again.
It is a three-year term, but they've already done one year, so we're actually going to be two years.
Okay, thank you. Okay, any other questions? Okay, is there a motion from the board to adopt either nine point four A or nine point four B? I'll just leave it up to the, to the movement.
Motion to approve nine point four A.
Okay, so this is a motion to approve nine point four A, which, if adopted, would make moot nine point four B. Is there a second on the motion?
A second.
Okay, thank you, Director Moyer. Any discussion? Okay, hearing none. We'll do unanimous roll call vote. All those in favor of approving item nine point four A, please indicate with an I or a yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? Okay, hearing none. My vote is also a yes, which means the motion carries unanimously. Nine point four B is, is moot, and we will move on to nine point five. Thank you.
Okay, the final transportation agreement has been through many, many avenues of Stocker Leader is there for you, and we actually have Chris Fisher in the back, and I believe some Christ representatives as well. Thank you for coming, but that transportation agreement is there for you.
Right. Any questions?
Yeah, maybe I should ask some of this earlier about how, not knowing too much about the bus system, how is that as far as the number of buses going forward versus what we had? Is there, is it very similar? Is it, I don't know, is there anything that sticks out that is a big difference between the one?
I have a gut on that, but I'm going to let Director Reese talk, or Director Reese talk.
The same. The contract is written that we, the district, specify the number of routes that are needed, and they, the contractor, provide the number of vehicles needed to fulfill those routes. So if we were to have a swing in population and need more buses, by contract, they'd have to provide those buses for us. From this year to next year, from this agreement to the next agreement, I anticipate it to be equal. Is there anything that sticks out to either? No, yeah, I believe it to, to be equal. There, there is a slight difference in the number of spare vehicles that are required in this contract compared to our previous, but that, that's a minor detail. It's not an everyday vehicle item.
And van routes are year to year based on need. Right.
Great, good question. Any other questions? Okay, is there a motion to adopt nine point five transportation agreement? Motion to adopt nine point five? Thank you, Director England. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, thank you, Director Blau. Any discussion? Okay, we'll also do this by unanimous roll call vote. All those in favor of approving nine point five, please indicate with an I or a yes.
Hi.
Any opposed? A hearing none. My vote is also a yes. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Okay, nine point six policy.
Yes, we've been tinkering with that language with trespassing. We met last Friday and tried to make an adjustment there. You want to talk about that?
Right, so Director Moore, you raised it at the committee meeting about the definition of trespassing. So essentially, what we did, and the recommendation of the Administrative Policy Committee, was to add in a clause in that, under trespassing, if you look at that first paragraph, it says, persons who criminally trespass upon school property as defined under law referencing eighteen Pennsylvania statutes thirty-five oh three, which makes it clear from our recommendation that it's referring to criminal trespass.
And that was perfect.
Okay.
That was perfect. Thank you.
Okay, good. Any, any questions regarding that? Okay, hearing none. Is there a motion to approve nine point six?
Motion to approve nine point six.
Okay, thank you, Director Williams. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, thank you, Director Blau. Any discussion? Okay, hearing none. We'll also do unanimous roll call vote. All those in favor of approving nine point six, please indicate with an I or a yes.
Yeah.
Any opposed? A hearing none. My vote's also a yes. Motion carries unanimously, and we'll move to nine point seven.
Okay, I will go over nine, seven, eight, and nine together. They're all like employment things. One is just middle school volleyball club for boys. We've had, we have a girls team. We have, we obviously have the high school girls and boys team, and we've run the middle school volleyball club for years, but it was Angie Pierce running it, new advisors for that group. We have unemployment. We have, as seen earlier in the year, Virginia Long is retiring. We did interviews for that, the secretarial position, and are hiring Lori Beers for that position, recommending that. And also, we had a paraprofessional that resigned, unfortunately, some, some things that she had to take care of, and I will miss her.
Any questions regarding items nine, seven, nine point seven through nine point nine? Okay, is there a motion to approve nine point seven through nine point nine?
Motion to approve nine point seven through nine point nine.
Thank you, Director Williams. Is there a second?
Second.
Great, thank you, Director Kreiser. Any discussion? Okay, hearing none. We'll do a unanimous roll call vote. All those in favor of approving nine point seven through nine point nine, please indicate with an I or a yes.
Hi.
Any opposed? Hearing none. My vote is also a yes. Motion carries unanimously, and we'll move to nine point one zero.
Yes, this is the classified handbook that was gone over by Mrs. Bruce at Exec last week. There was a question late in the day today, something about lunches. We don't know where that came from. We did not change anything with lunches, so if you heard that question, that is, there's nothing changed with that. All the changes that we went over, those were the entirety of the changes for the manual. So we felt that those changes were, were all positive changes, but that's there to approve.
Okay. Questions regarding the Classified Employee Manual?
I have one question. I think this was thrown out there the past couple of weeks or so, something about the employees. There's like different levels of employees, so I guess this is more towards like the support staff, where if there's like a snow day that they don't get paid. Is there any way that, since it's not their fault, we could look at possibly supplementing their income for, you know, what's it, one or two days a year, maybe?
Well, one of the things we tried to do was we, we, we went from sick days to paid time off this year, which would allow them to utilize those for snow days, and that's over top of, we also, we also try to give them some service, things that they can do to earn hours on those days. It's maybe not always equivalent to, to what they do in the course of that day, but we gave them an avenue, because in the past, they've only gotten sick days. And I know we talked about this. If we get too heavy into it, we've got to call an exec and go over there because it is contractual unemployment type of thing. But we did try to change the, we changed the sick days to paid time off that could be used even now for if they, some of them, you know, from a family situation, they go on vacation, and in the past, they'd have to take unpaid days. They no longer have to do that. They could use them on a virtual day as well, so that they don't lose that. We also added paid holidays for the, each of the groups, different amounts depending on how, how long you're here in the course of a year, but that was a, an additional opportunity for them to be paid for some of those days as well.
Were there additional paid time days off, or it's just equal, they're just now called paid time instead of?
It, it's still, it's pro-rated, so go ahead.
Okay, any other questions? You have a question?
Yeah, I have a question. Just, I forgot to ask by at the last meeting. What is the starring grade for those teachers aid?
Well, we have, go ahead.
You might, yeah, you might as well come up. Thank you, appreciate it.
Just the teacher aid positions, like the part-time ones, or the, or the full-time ones, or the, okay.
So for this school year, for anybody that's a general education, it's thirteen twenty-two, and then if you're in a special ed placement, it's thirteen seventy-two, and then if you are in what we would call like a high needs placement, autistic support, emotional support, life skills, that's an additional fifty cents above that.
Now, that does not include, that's not for next year. The chart for, we talked about the percentage of the exec session. The chart for each of the individual positions will be coming to you this month in preparation for the June meeting.
Okay, perfect, thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, any additional questions? Is there a motion to adopt nine point one zero?
Motion to adopt nine point one zero.
Thank you, Director Kreiser. Is there a second? Thank you, Director England. Any discussion on the motion? Okay, hearing none. We'll do a unanimous roll call vote. All those in favor of approving nine point one zero, please indicate with an I or a yes.
Yes.
Hi.
Any opposed? Okay, hearing none. My vote is also a yes, so motion carries unanimously. Okay, nine point one one.
Yeah, I want to let Director Klein take this one.
All right, nine point one one, resolution in support of House Bill nineteen eighty-three. I talked about it last, last week, but I'll kind of go over that one more time. So every year after winter sports, it's like clockwork, the articles come out about the differences between boundary versus non-boundary schools in the PIA championships. And it, it just comes out every year, but nothing's really ever done about it. But, but I noticed there was a House Bill, House Bill nineteen eighty-three, that's currently in the Education Committee, that's cosponsored by our own state representative, that would try to pave the way for PIA to make a separation between the championships. So that way, public schools like us that have boundaries won't have to compete against the private non-boundary schools. It, you know, we could talk about this for a while, but those non-boundary schools oftentimes have the best equipment, you know, the best coaches, connections, and it is severely unfair when you look at the results of the championships over the past couple of years. Private, private schools or non-boundary schools were included in the PIA in nineteen seventy-two, and it was to end segregation of public versus private, to give them an opportunity to compete in school sports. But I think over time, that got abused, and that, that those schools just found ways to keep getting better and better and better. And I think it's time we hit the reset button and support this House Bill that's currently in the Education Committee, and we, we, we should go ahead and support this House Bill that is going to try to pave the way for PIA to look at alternate championships, so public schools have a chance again.
Thank you. Any questions? And also note that Director Klein had a, a committee with Director Kreiser. Director Kreiser took the initial draft, really appreciate that, and then we, we edited it. So what you have before you is, is what came from that committee. I would note, unfortunately, because I transcribed this resolution, that I numbered it incorrectly. Thank you. It should be resolution twenty twenty-four dash zero one, not zero four. So assuming the motion carries, we'll have to revise it. So with that, any questions regarding the resolution?
I had a quick comment. I'm mostly in support of it, that something, somebody mentioned to me, which, which I thought of, in certain sports, when you have a team and an individual, we like the, I'm more supportive of the team, but not the individual, because like, of course, wrestling states, you would have so many individualized state championships. And I, I know my, my son would want to do the wrestle the top of the top. He wouldn't want to be limited to just wrestling public schools. But for the team, I think that's great.
Yeah, I believe, I'd have to look over this one more time, but I believe this is for the team aspect, not the individual.
And it, and it's also a, it's a discretionary bill for PIA, so it doesn't mandate that they make this change. So I would imagine that PIA could also, you know, structure that however they wanted to as well. Okay, is there a motion to adopt nine point one one as edited?
I'll make that motion.
Great. Thank you, Director Moyer. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, thank you, Director Murray. Is there any discussion? Okay, all those in favor of approving nine point one one as edited this evening, please indicate with an I or a yes.
Hi.
Yes.
Any opposed? Okay, hearing none. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Director Klein. Thank you, Director Kreiser. Director Kreiser as the legislative liaison, then we can maybe talk about this offline, but my thought would be that we convey this resolution once it's signed to the cosponsors of the bill and provide a courtesy copy to our representative. Does that sound?
Yeah, I actually did speak with Representative Diamond's office yesterday regarding the resolution, and was provided the contact that would be the appropriate place to send the resolution to.
Okay.
Show our support to move it out of committee.
Great, excellent. Thank you. All right, information items. Dr. Messinger.
There are some curriculum that were uploaded for you, but you're going to get a lot of curriculum between now and June's agenda, most of which will be sent to you by the end of this week, so you have time to look through it. Family consumer sciences, and tech ed, I don't know, there's so many, I can't, elementary library. So those will be coming to give you several weeks to look through, but look for those. Change orders, Dr. Reese?
Change orders that were approved over the month are before you in the minutes. If you have any questions, let me know.
Do we have need for a change order committee coming up?
We're still working through the high-valued ones. We're trying to get them down. We'll see once, once we're done with our, our reworking. There was an engineering piece that went out today, an ASI that went out today specifically about some HVAC work. That one would be over the threshold, depending on how it comes back. The rework, I think, is more sensible and, and may actually come in under, under the value needed for a change order committee meeting, but we'll let you know.
Thank you.
Any questions? Okay, we'll move to reports. I know we just addressed it, but Director Fowler, anything? Nothing else to report. I, I am looking forward to your first change order committee meeting. And, and in case you haven't heard, I like five-page reports, if you, if you don't. Okay, thank you, thank you. Okay, CTC, Director Klein.
Yes. So last month, we awarded a contract to Beers &amp; Hoffman to perform a feasibility study at the CTC, and Beers &amp; Hoffman has plenty, plenty of experience here in Lebanon County. I think they're going to do a great job. One of the other reasons that Beers &amp; Hoffman stood out to the Joint Operating Committee that selected them was they had a educational consultant piece of their feasibility study that's going to help the CTC take a look at our program areas and kind of help steer us on what the future looks like with high-demand jobs. You know, because we're talking about renovating, well, what does that look like? So we have an education consultant part of the feasibility study that's going to help guide us through that.
Good, thank you.
I'll just add to that, because we don't have a meeting before then. I will be spending a little more time with Director Klein, effective in June. I will be the superintendent of record, assuming I get it approved next Tuesday night. So I'll be taking over that position for two years.
Okay, great. Okay, IU thirteen, Director Murray.
The IU thirteen has a booklet here, the state mandates. I know there was some discussion about stand, state mandates. If you'd like to spend some time with this book, I'd be happy to share it with any one of you. So look at our state mandates.
Is that the twenty twenty-four edition?
It is, yeah.
Okay. I think I sent the twenty twenty-two edition, but there's additional things in that one, yeah.
Do we have an electronic version of that?
I'm sure we do, yeah. I can forward that, sure.
Great.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, thanks. Okay, legislative liaison, Director Kreiser.
There were a few bills introduced in the state legislature, one that would propose a seven-year plan to address the funding inequities that you referenced earlier between the school districts of Pennsylvania. There was also another one that was introduced that would cap charter school payments at eight thousand dollars. No movement on any of those bills, but they have been introduced and, of course, were supported in the governor's budget address. And there was also an advocacy group that met in Harrisburg that is, would like to see free school lunches across the state, state-funded.
State-funded, great, okay. Okay, thank you, excellent report. PSBA liaison, Director Blau. Okay, great. Any new business for this evening?
It's not new business, but I do want to take congratulations to the first annual talent show of the elementary. They were beautiful.
They were beautiful. Great singers, dancers, future. Uh, it's, it was nice. It was, it was a well-run program, so I appreciate that.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yeah, and on that note, a shout out to Mr. Campbell, who's heading up the, the youth track and field. Um, he does a great job and so do all the assistant coaches. And, uh, he also gets the, a lot of the young, uh, younger, uh, junior high athletes involved in some leadership roles. It's pretty cool to see. So he, he did a phenomenal job.
I think they had 157 athletes this year. Incredible. Yep.
Yeah, it grows each year.
Yeah, yeah. All right, very good. Um, so before we adjourn, uh, as, as I do always, I just direct your attention down to item 14. To remember, we have a lot coming up between now and our next board meeting to include awards recognition programs, uh, the baccalaureate and, uh, of course, uh, graduation. So, um, yeah, if you can attend those things, if you're scheduled to, please do. Um, great events. Okay, is there a motion to adjourn this evening's meeting? Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor of adjourning this evening's meeting, please indicate with an I or a yes. Any opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
I'm just looking out for the little guy. I know it wasn't my budget and I had it all of a sudden, no, no pay because of the snow and I couldn't do anything about it. It'd be frustrating.
Yeah, move across the street.